Did you call the meeting order, please? Roll call.
Alderman Tolaner.
Here.
Alderman Hodl.
Here.
Alderman Ship.
Here.
Alderman Austin.
Here.
Alderman Clark.
Here.
Alderman Mayberry.
Here.
Alderman Foley.
Here.
Mayor Paul.
Here. Can we please stand for the pledge followed by the invocation by Alderman Austin? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As we celebrate Black History Month, I'm going to share some words of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. And these words are appropriate today as they are the day he spoke them. Oh God, we thank you for the lives of great saints and prophets in the past who have revealed to us that we can stand up amid the problems and difficulties and trials of life and not give in. We thank you for our foreparents who've given us something in the midst of darkness and exploitation and oppression to keep going. Grant that we will go on with proper faith and proper determination of will so that we will all be able to make creative contributions to this world. In thy name and spirit of God, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Minutes of the meeting of January 23rd, 2017.
Approve the minutes as printed.
Second.
You have a motion of the second to approve. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Update Rock Island, I have five items tonight. The first one is Augustana's small jazz combos performed their winter concert in Larson Hall within the Burdenoff Hall of Fine Arts on Wednesday, February 8th at 8 o'clock PM. The event is free. For more information, please call 794-7323. The city of Rock Island Southwest Branch Library will hold a craft night on Valentine's Night, February 14th from 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM. Make something fun with your family or your sweetheart. The event is free, but registration is required. Please call 732-7338 to reserve a spot or visit www.rigov.org. Head out to Watchtower Lodge at Black Hawk State Historic Site on Tuesday, February 14th from 6:30 to 8:30 PM. You can go for a stroll on a luminary lit trail or just go into the lodge and keep warm by the fire while enjoying fresh donuts and cider or hot cocoa. There will be music provided by Just for Fun. This is a fun event for singles, couples, and families. The event is free. For more information, call 788-9536. On Thursday, February 16th, the Hallberg Center will welcome local historian Linda Anderson as she discusses the works of architect Olaf Svinn, who prepared designs for over 400 homes in Rock Island, Moline, and East Moline. These homes were built for the purpose of filling them with Rock Island Arsenal workers who at the time were preparing for World War I. Svinn also designed office buildings, large factories, ornate theaters, and beautiful churches. Join us from 7:00 to 8:00 PM and learn more about Olaf Svinn and his lasting impact on the architectural fabric of Rock Island. Admission is $5 and members of Friends of Hallberg can get in for free. And finally, the outdoor show will be coming to the Quad City Expo Center, February 16th through the 19th. Hours are Thursday, 4:00 to 8:00 PM, Friday, noon to 8:00 PM, Saturday, 9:00 AM to 8:00 PM, and Sunday, 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Adults are $8, kids between 6 and 15 are $1, and kids under 6 are free. Advanced tickets are available online at www.qcexpocenter.com. That's update Rock Island for this week, but Alderman Mayberry would like to mention a couple of things about Chason Randall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As most of you, I hope, realize, we had a young man, Chason Randall, that finally reached his dream. He signed a contract to play for the next three years in the NBA. Chason was not only an excellent basketball player at Rocky, Stanford, and across overseas. He played one year overseas. This is Chason Randall. He also goes to my church, and he has always said he is from Rock Island. He has never said he is from the Quad Cities. So, he is a wonderful Rock Island person, okay? And we need to applaud him. He has thanked the people from Rock Island for what they've done, and this isn't that I'm anti-Quad City Chamber or whatever, Steve. Make sure you get this correct, please. But I am pro-Rock Island, and so is this young man. And on top of it, his education that he got at Rock Island. He was a straight A student. He was president of his class. He graduated from Stanford in three years. This is Rock Island. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. Gavin, close the regular meeting and open a public hearing on a request from Marie Glines for an amendment to an approved special use permit to change the name of the special use permit to Marie Glines. Maintain the four apartments and the existing four square foot unlighted freestanding sign and allow use of the former first floor auditorium space to be used as a studio for conducting music lessons and small concerts at 1808 Seventh Avenue. Is Marie here?
Yes, sir.
Please, come to the podium, please. Move that down just a little bit so they can hear you.
Thank you.
Name and address.
Marie Harriet Glines. I live at 1808 Seventh Avenue, Rock Island, Illinois.
Okay, then just a brief, just tell us what your plans are here.
Well, my first floor tenant was the music director at Augustana College. And he went on to college to, dropped out and went to college to further his education as far as whatever. And he had mentioned to me something about buying my place, but then putting in a music studio. Well, me being a nut, I guess you could say, I was thinking of starving artists, and they never can afford to pay the rent or whatever on the place, so why can't he use the space for free until he gets enough clientele where I feel is necessary to get some money back? You know, and the garret in France is the space between the ceilings of your bedroom and your roof. It's called an attic here, but in France, it's called a garret. So, it's a music studio for starving artists because they can't afford, they can afford an attic, but they can't afford a plush apartment, so that's why we're still going to keep it as being the garret. But, and then again, he may not open a music studio because if he gets another job in another state, then there goes, but I do want to get it in my name as far as my special use permit.
Okay, now let me back up. The person that had it before passed away, is that correct?
My partner, yeah.
Partner passed away.
We were married.
Okay.
And she passed away April the 2nd of last year.
So, you just, what you're trying to do tonight is have the current, everything as it is, put in your name so you have control of it, basically?
Yes, sir.
That's correct.
I want to make it legal.
Okay, and you want to make that first floor an auditorium if it can be used for that?
Yeah.
Okay.
For the music or even, I might just say, and let the tenants go down there and shoot some pool and watch TV and play records. That's fine, too, but at least it's in the special use permits in my name now and not Dawn's.
Okay. Questions or comments from council members? Anything?
This is my ward, and I haven't heard any complaints or yays or nays, so I am assuming there's no issues from the neighborhood, so I support it.
Okay, if you'd like to be seated, I have to go through a certain process here, so if you'd like to be seated.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much for your time.
You're welcome. Okay, well, is there anybody here that wishes to speak in favor of this project? One more time, is there anybody here that wishes to speak in favor of the project? Not hearing anybody, is there anybody here wishing to speak in opposition to the project? One more time, is there anybody wishing to speak in opposition to the project? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing, reconvene the regular meeting, and entertain a motion.
Move to approve the amendment to the special use permit as recommended, subject to the stipulations as stated in the report, and refer to the city attorney for an ordinance.
Second.
You have a motion of the second, any questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Tolaner.
Yes.
Hodl.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Foley.
Aye.
Motion approved. Item eight.
A special ordinance amending Chapter 3, Section 3-11, Small I, and Chapter 8, Article 3, Division 2, Section 8-97 of the Code of Ordinances as it relates to gambling devices and video gaming licenses.
Move to consider suspend the rules and pass the ordinance.
Second.
You have a motion of the second, any questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Tolaner.
Yes.
Hodl.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Foley.
Aye.
Motion approved. Item nine.
A special ordinance amending Chapter 6, Article 2 of the Code of Ordinances by adding Section 6-25 as it relates to system inspection records.
To consider suspend the rules and pass the ordinance.
Second.
You have a motion of the second, any questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Tolaner.
Yes.
Hodl.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Foley.
Aye.
Motion approved. Item 10, A through H.
Move to accept the reports unauthorized payments as recommended.
Second.
Motion of the second, any questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Tolaner.
Yes.
Hodl.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Foley.
Aye.
Motion approved. Item 11.
Claims for the weeks of January 20th through January 26th in the amount of $535,591.93 and January 27th through February 2nd in the amount of $542,539.98 in payroll for the weeks of January 16th through January 29th in the amount of $1,476,027.84.
Move to allow the claims and payroll. Second.
You have a motion of the second to allow? Any questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Tolaner.
Yes.
Hodl.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Foley.
Aye.
Motion approved. Item 12.
Report from the Public Works Department regarding the state contract purchase of a 2017 Ford F-250 four-by-four pickup from Landmark Ford Incorporated of Springfield, Illinois in the amount of $26,734.
Move to approve the purchase as recommended.
Second.
You have a motion of the second, any questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Tolaner.
Yes.
Hodl.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Foley.
Aye.
Motion approved. Item 13.
Report from the Information Technology Department regarding the purchase of an upgrade to the MS Govern software used for business licenses, permits, and inspections from Harris Govern of Allen, Texas in the amount of $7,875.
Move to approve the purchase as recommended and authorize the interim city manager to sign the agreement.
Second.
You have a motion of the second, any questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Tolaner.
Yes.
Hodl.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Foley.
Aye.
Motion approved. Item 14.
Report from the Public Works Department regarding bids for emergency repairs for two Southwest Rock Island internal pressure regulating valves, recommending the bid be awarded to Valley Construction Incorporated of Rock Island, Illinois in the amount of $39,565.
Motion to award the bid as recommended and authorize the city manager to execute the proposal.
Second.
You have a motion of the second, any questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Tolaner.
Yes.
Hodl.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Foley.
Aye.
Motion approved. Item 15.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding a request for a modification to the current demolition contract by adding one additional residential property at 1602 Ninth Street in the amount of $22,950 to Valley Construction Incorporated of Rock Island, Illinois.
Move to accept the bid proposal from Valley Construction and modify the current demolition contract by adding one property at the rate bid as recommended and direct the city interim city manager to award the contract. Second.
You have a motion of the second, any questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Tolaner.
Yes.
Hodl.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Foley.
Aye.
Motion approved. Item 16.
Report from the Human Resources Department regarding a nine-month extension of the city attorney legal services contract with the law firm of Katsunus Wang and Morrison, Dave Morrison, through December 31st, 2017.
Move to approve the extension as recommended.
Second.
You have a motion of the second, any questions or comments?
I'd just like to say I think our city attorney, Mr. Morrison, does a good job for the city. I know he cares about his job and he cares about citizens and he cares about protecting the city's interests as well, so I think he's been doing a good job for us.
And I like to echo those sentiments, but I would like to say we did discuss having our in-house attorney, and I don't know where that went to, and like Josh said, Dave, I think you're doing a wonderful job.
Well, thank you, I appreciate it.
Do you want me to answer to that question?
A second.
So, that's being evaluated now, and we'll have something later in the year on that, so if we decided to go that route, then that would take effect when this contract ends at the end of the year.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Tolaner.
Yes.
Hodl.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Foley.
Aye.
Motion approved. Item 17.
Report from the city clerk regarding corrections to Exhibit A and Exhibit B of ordinance number 056-2016 due to Scrivener's errors.
Move to amend the exhibits as recommended.
Second.
You have a motion of the second, any questions or comments?
And perhaps this might be an opportunity for our in-house attorney to shine here. Scrivener's errors, just a fancy way of saying someone made a mistake?
A typo, yes. It's an old-fashioned word for what we would call today a typo, and so it was just, there was an exhibit attached that needed a correction of a typographical error.
Okay. Roll call.
Alderman Tolaner.
Yes.
Hodl.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Foley.
Item 18.
Report from the Public Works Department regarding an amended resolution appropriating $1,090,133.50 of motor fuel tax funds for street maintenance for 2016.
Move to adopt the resolution as recommended.
Second.
Second, any questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Tolaner.
Yes.
Hodl.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Foley.
Aye.
Motion approved. Item 19.
Report from the Public Works Department regarding a resolution appropriating $1,064,267.50 of motor fuel tax funds for street maintenance in 2017.
Motion to adopt the resolution as recommended.
Second.
You have a motion of the second, any questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Tolaner.
Yes.
Hodl.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Foley.
Aye.
Motion approved. Item 20.
Report from the Finance Department regarding an adjustment to the calendar year 2017 budget, recommending increasing the Capital Improvements Fund 301 in the amount of $500,000.
Move to approve the budget adjustment as recommended.
Second.
You have a motion of the second, any questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Tolaner.
Yes.
Hodl.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Foley.
Aye.
Motion approved. Item 21.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding the Jumers Casino Rock Island TIF surplus, recommending declaring a surplus of funds in TIF 4 in the amount of $571,341.70.
Move to declare the surplus of funds as recommended and authorize the city finance director to return the surplus funds to the Rock Island County Treasurer for distribution.
Second.
You have a motion of the second, any questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Tolaner.
Yes.
Hodl.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Aye.
Foley.
Aye.
Motion approved. Item 22, other business, council members.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a couple. The first one is back to the chickens, okay? And our new C. Director, if you could come up perhaps to answer these questions, and Randy, feel free to help him.
What chickens?
Thank you. Could you give us a report as far as how many people have applied for and got licenses, spent their $25, took the classes, did everything appropriate since we passed that?
Absolutely. As of today, we have two properties that have gone through the full process, the classes applied. I know one has received their actual permit, the other one, the documentation has been supplied to the city clerks, it might still be in the process of being administered, so we have two that have gone through it. Now, how many are in the current application process? That I can't answer because I don't have that number, but I know we have two active permits.
Okay, could you tell us what wards and what part of the city those two are in?
Forty Fifth Street and Forty Third Street.
Okay. So, that'd be Josh, that's you, ain't it? Okay.
Well, it depends on the avenue.
It could be PJ, too. It could be Third Ward.
I believe they're, I believe they're both in my ward.
Yeah, what is it, 2008?
Proponent or whatever, okay.
Heard there's a lot coming for Ward 2.
I've got one. Heard a lot.
Yeah, oh, I've been going door-to-door there trying to get people interested in it.
Hey, I try to represent the second ward, and that's what I'm doing.
I'm just kidding.
I know you are. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Unless someone else has any questions.
Any other comments? Is that the only questions for that? Okay. Anything else? You said you had two items, or anybody else?
Yes, on January 23rd of this year, the following amended motion regarding contractors to the emergency contractor list was approved by the council, which I was one of them. The motion was to amend the emergency contractor rotation list to firms that have their corporate headquarters in the city of Rock Island. At the meeting tonight, I need to know, need to ask our attorney, is this going to be setting a precedent? Because I want this opened up again, because I did vote for it. Do we have other parts of this city where the only people that can bid on something have to have corporate headquarters in Rock Island?
I am not aware of any other policies that require the having of, having the location of your headquarters be, your corporate headquarters be in the city of Rock Island. I am not aware of any.
None. So, we would be setting a precedent doing this, correct?
Well, certainly this being the only one, that would be, I guess someone could argue that it's precedent, otherwise, but also I suppose you could argue on the other side that this is a special circumstance for, for one reason or another. I don't know that it would require that you have more of them in the future, if that's what you're asking, but it would be the only one.
So, then would it be a precedent in the former amendment to say you have to have a presence in Rock Island?
That same, the argument would be the same, yeah. Two sides to that argument as well, yes.
Okay, as I say, I would like more discussion on it night, tonight. Open it up for more discussion as far as what we did before, okay? And I, go ahead.
Well, certainly.
Does it have to be a motion made to do that?
Well, if you're, if you're making a motion to amend, then you would make the motion to amend, and then if it were seconded, it would open it up for discussion. On the other hand, I suppose if others wanted to comment it without you making a motion, they could comment as well, but otherwise, if you wanted to bring officially a motion to change what was done previously, you could do that at this meeting or any other subsequent meeting by a motion to amend.
Okay, I would make a motion to amend.
Second.
Don't you have to state what the motion is?
Question, yes.
You have to state the motion.
If you read, if you read.
Okay. Motion to amend emergency contractor list to approve the emergency contractor rotation list as recommended by city staff in their staff report as it appeared in the agenda agenda, January 23rd.
So that's the motion, is there a second?
I second it.
Okay, now it's open for conversation, communication, anything?
Mayor, I'll be abstaining from this discussion.
Other conversation? None?
You know, I, I, I brought this a couple of weeks ago, because it's been a policy, and I wanted to change that policy to, to support those that have corporate headquarters in Rock Island. I know the said company that, uh, does not have corporate headquarters in Rock Island is in a, a town just south of here, a village, and I know, uh, that policy, uh, is very similar to ours, where it's, uh, only that company gets that, and no other contractors come in, uh, as well. And so I find it very interesting that some council members have issues, we talk about regionalism, one, somebody else made a comment about that a few weeks ago. If you talk about regionalism, then, then you should open up the contract to all, uh, to all contractors then, on the Illinois side.
Okay, other comments? No other comments?
Apparently the alderman who talked about regionalism doesn't want to talk.
Oh, I, I will, I will talk about how...
That's not regionalism then. Just Rock Island and Mylan. You would have to have companies from other portions of other parts of the Quad Cities, and that's regionalism.
Well, the fourth, the fourth on the list, if they have to go to that, is from East Moley. But they're not, they would not be listed on the list.
But that's regionalism.
Yes. Anybody else want to comment? You want to comment, then we go to, uh, I guess we go to roll call, Dave, is that next?
That's correct, yes.
Because we go to a roll call vote. Alderman Mayberry has made a motion that, uh, we go back to the originally, uh, recommended by the staff, which was to have the three listed, which were, uh, Valley, Langman, and Brant, is that correct?
Correct.
And that's your motion?
Yes.
And that's your second, right? Okay, then we go to roll call.
Alderman Talonier.
Yes.
Alderman Hodle.
Oh.
Alderman Shep, Epstein. Alderman Austin.
Yes.
Alderman Clark.
Nay.
Sorry, what was that?
Nay.
Alderman Mayberry.
Yes.
Alderman Foley.
Nay.
So, we're tied at three and three. What does that do now?
Well, it, unless the, uh, mayor wished to cash a vote that would break the tie, a three to three tie would be, uh, would not pass. So if, you would have the option, if you chose to vote, uh, because it is a tie, because your vote would change the vote if you voted in the affirmative, so you would have the option of voting in the affirmative, or, or not voting, yes.
Okay, well, it's the last, it's the last meeting where that was brought to light. I did state that I supported the original motion. I support the fact that, uh, the company involved that we're talking about happens to be Brant, uh, they do have facilities in Rock Island, they have an asphalt plant, and, uh, many of the Brant, uh, family do live in Rock Island, so based on that, I am going to support and vote yes to that motion. Okay, that is, any other comments from people on other business?
Yeah, I got some. I'd like Larry Cook to come up and, and also to have Randy Tweet, as we talk about Brant Construction, I found an article, and then find an article, I read an article on the famed Sixth Avenue project, uh, over the weekend. I was led to believe by, um, Terry Brant and others, uh, you know, that, you know, this project went smoothly, uh, and here we have a contractor, a subcontractor, if I look here, called KBC out of Savannah, Illinois, suing them for the sum of $233,000. I'd like to ask, what is the city's implication in this, as we are ultimately paying the bills? And, uh, paying Brant, now they're being sued. I'd like to know, what's the city's role? What can the subcontractor do against us? You know, what role do we have here?
I think Dave can best answer that, because this is a legal issue.
Okay, sorry, Larry.
No, it's fine.
Um, yes, there has been a, a notice of lien filed, and there has been a subsequent suit filed on the, uh, the lien, and I believe that the, uh, total is, as you noted from the article, I think $233,000 plus. Um, and so, once the city receives notice of that, we have to, and we have, uh, held back funds that would be sufficient to pay that judgment, should the court determine that in fact, um, those funds have to be paid to the subcontractor for non-payment.
So we have to pay them?
We withhold the funds that would have been payable to...
We withhold the funds.
Yeah, and, and we do have sufficient funds withheld for both that, and also for, um, the, uh, any other issues that we've talked about previously regarding the contract as to liquidated damages.
So can they put a lien on the city?
No, they cannot lien property, but what could happen, if the city were to have, to fail to withhold that money, once they get the notice of the lien, then they could come to the city and say, "Well, you should not have paid that money out," but that has not occurred. In fact, the, the city is holding on to sufficient funds to cover that in the event, um, there's a full recovery by the, um, subcontractor.
Well, I'm astonished, because, uh, Mr. Brant was here last April, if I recall, and, uh, I didn't think there was any problems with this project, and with contractors. I talked to Alderman Talonier, who, uh, is a very big supporter of this project, he acted like, you know, there wasn't a lot of issues with this, and all of a sudden we have a subcontractor, heard rumors that this was possibility, so you have a company that was 10 months late, and then now they're getting sued, uh, for non-payment, and we, I think, can we say, have we made our payments on time to Brant?
Yes, we have.
Yes, every, every payment request they've submitted, we've paid.
Okay, so then their payments, their subcontractor, obviously hasn't happened.
Do we know when this is going to come to, to fruition, the whole thing?
Well, the, the next court date...
Looks like, uh, May 18th is the next court date, per my article.
Well, I mean, when, when we're going to have, when we're going to have finally conclusion to what we're going to do with Brant, everything, when the whole thing is going to come to conclusion.
Well, uh, according to the email that staff had sent out, we are, to have a determination meeting later this month, uh, over the, um, all the items in the contract, and determine the total cost for the project, and then we will be presenting our case that, uh, for our position on liquidated damages, so that, that could in fact drag on for a while, if, if mediation ensues, and...
Is that the 21st, is that what I saw?
Twenty-first, twenty-second.
Yeah, it's a kind of our closeout meeting, sit down with them.
And that's, that's our end, that's, that's the city of Rock Island, and this is...
But we have money held back for that, as well as for the one you're talking about.
Correct.
But I think hearing, I think hearing from last April, I mean, I, I don't think there's any issues, so why, why, why is there liquidated damages? I don't know. I mean, according to the Brant side, there, there was no issues, and so that should be a moot point. But for those of us that look out for the city, and for the taxpayers of Rock Island, and through this project, you know, for those of us here, we will fight this project, or we will fight in the liquidated damage portion. We're here to support our constituents. And issues like this, when you have a lawsuit that comes up on a famed project where we've already had issues from the city side, maybe not seen on the opposite side, so we keep hearing, so we were told in April of last year, by Terry Brant. Thank you, I just wanted to clarify that.
Any other comments from council members?
Something else?
Go. That's it, Larry, you're done.
I get to say something happy now. Um, so, it, it's, all the elected officials know, when you go to the grocery store, it's hit or miss, sometimes you run into people that you probably don't want to have to run into, and sometimes you run into people that you're excited to see, and really, I just wanted to brag this about one of our city employees, and I've known her for several years, I've gotten to know her, she's actually, lives in my ward, she's attended ward meetings with me before, and she's really probably one of the finest officers I've ever met with or worked with, and I saw her in the grocery store just last weekend, and we were there for probably an hour talking about the city, and just, I, I've, I've met with her many times before, but si- seeing her on a Saturday morning, and having her ta- you know, in her jeans and her t-shirt, and having her talk about how passionate she is about Rock Island, and her devotion and her commitment to our residents, I mean, honestly, it brought tears to my eyes, and she just deserved a shout out, so I just wanted to tell Sergeant Di Robinson, thank you for all she does, because she really is incredible. For those of you that have never met her, try to meet her, because she's, she's an amazing woman, so, and one of our few females on the force, so, extra shout out for that too, so, that's it.
Other comments?
Yeah, Mayor, I wanted to, uh, clarify a couple things for the record here. I have abstained from the vote that we had tonight, two meetings in a row, uh, due to a, uh, preponderance of caution, uh, I started a new job in January with the Indiana, Illinois, Iowa Foundation for Fair Contracting. Uh, this is a labor management organization that has an interest in promoting, uh, responsible contractors, and, uh, I have felt that with my position, uh, taking a vote on the issue could have been perceived, uh, by some as a conflict. So, and for that particular topic, I just wanted to clear the air, uh, there have been some, uh, in particular, Mr. Randy Hagan, who I know is a, a friend of Alderman Taloniers, has made, uh, a point here recently in the newspaper, online comments, and...
Clarify, I think that's Dennis Hagan.
Sorry, Dennis Hagan, um, thank you. To, uh, try to paint some sort of portrait of this, uh, conspiracy that I'm, I'm, I'm trying to lead here, or some sort of effort, and, um, I don't think it was of any, uh, secret to those who, in my ward, or anybody on this council, or really anyone in the city who knows what I've been up to for the past decade, that I've taken a pretty hard stance on, uh, pro-worker issues and pro-family issues, uh, and I'm proud of the fact that there isn't, uh, a, a labor union in, in the city of Rock Island, whether it's the Labor's 309, uh, Operators 150, Sheet Metal Workers 91, Iron Workers 111, um, uh, Insulators, Local 81, Pipe Fitters Local 25, uh, who don't support me, and who I don't have a great relationship with. Uh, these organizations employ thousands of individuals, and they, they, they support a wide network of families and neighborhoods with benefits and living wages, um, and so for me, uh, to be attacked as some sort of, uh, union agitator, or, or a democratic sympathizer, I, I've made no secret of where I stand politically. This is a nonpartisan board, I think we all do our best to keep our politics out of this chamber, but it's, it's impossible, at the end of the day, with, dealing with human beings, um, but I guess I just wanted to say publicly, uh, you know, for, for anyone who's in public office, you know that, uh, you know, the people are going to go out there and attack you, uh, and some of us know that very well, um, and, but the, the funny thing is, is that when it's, uh, an accusation that's framed in a way that's a big shock, um, I don't think anyone in, in this community doesn't know where I stand when it comes to organized labor, and when it comes to the values of the Democratic Party. Uh, but when I'm in this seat, and this job I swore an oath to, was to protect the interests of the taxpayers, and I guess what concerns me is that, um, you know, the emergency contract work is a way for, uh, the companies who are on the list to get money from the, the taxpayers of this community, and that money is a privilege, and that work is a privilege. Uh, and I don't care what city you're based in, whether it's Mylan, East Moley, and Rock Island, wherever, uh, it's a privilege, and we have an ongoing situation with Brant Construction, with the Sixth Avenue project. And I think what concerns me most about that is, you know, we had the principal in here for a conversation, um, where, you know, he had the opportunity to apologize to the inconvenience residents, uh, the bes- uh, business owners, the auto shop and Skeleton Key Antiques, and others who experienced, uh, uh, demonstratable losses in their earnings because customers couldn't get into their business, uh, churches, uh, that were inconvenienced because their, um, members couldn't get in, uh, for an extended time, and I know the mayor, you've, you've noted that we had multiple streets closed at the same time that shouldn't have been, and, um, so where, where I find myself is where, you know, I think, you know, the city now has a responsible contractor, uh, ordinance defined, and I know these are two issues, but I think just from an institutional standpoint, I think we really need to be conscious of what the laws are, but also who we represent, and we represent the taxpayers, and this Sixth Avenue sewer project was one of the largest deals we've had in the city, uh, nearly $11 million. And, and now we know that someone who was supposed to get paid, didn't get paid, and we've been paying, and the documentation of repeat OSHA fines, it's on OSHA's website, cited for the 2,200 block of Sixth Avenue, uh, for this project, um, you know, well over, you know, several thousand dollars in fines were issued, through settlements, repeat issues for the same, for the same citation. So these are the facts, and these are the things that we have to operate with, and so I just hope at the end of the day that we can distinguish, you know, on an issue-by-issue basis, what we have to do, because I may have an affiliation with, with organized labor, and I know Alderman Talonier and some others here have a, a good relationship with, with the Brant family, um, but I think we have to make sure that we're putting the taxpayers here first, and really upholding our oath to be stewards, financial stewards of these dollars, and treating these dollars as, uh, you know, sacred things that, that we shouldn't be squandering. So I just wanted to clear up the record on that, because, um, you know, I, again, want to make very clear, I have no personal interest in going after Brant. Uh, the contractors in this community will tell you they're qualified to do a wide range of work. I think Randy would attest to that, I think Larry would attest to that, uh, there's no doubt about that, that is without question, uh, but we, we do have a particular project that's at play here, uh, there's a lot of money on the line, uh, they've told us, we heard in person that they plan to contest liquidated damages, um, and I think we should just be, uh, careful about continuing to award public dollars when there's, uh, other issues at hand that need to be looked at with a discerning and hopefully unbiased eye.
That it? Any other comments from council members?
Yes, Mayor, if I could. Uh, I agree with part of what Josh said, sound like a good mayor speech that you just had. I was a labor person for 42 years, a union person for 42 years. I represent the Second Ward, the people in the Second Ward. I was elected by them both, union and non-union. They came to me after our meeting two weeks ago, some of them, and asked me about this. These people pay taxes in Rock Island, union and non-union. We have two separate issues, I believe, here, and I will ask the city attorney about it. The list that we brought up tonight, the emergency list, that's not up for bid, correct? Those people are on that list, that's who's on that list.
That is correct, because of the, the nature of the work that has to be done, when an emergency comes up, there's not time to have the competitive bidding process, it needs to be addressed right away to address either safety issues, or issues that affect citizens.
Okay, uh, I will ask the city manager if he knows, or yourself, have any of these three on that list had any charges, any violations brought on them for emergency services?
Not to my knowledge.
None of them. So, you know, we're talking about apples over here, and oranges over here, when you talk about depriving someone here in this community, taxpayers, of making a living, I got a problem with that. These people live all over Rock Island, and other places too, that work for Brant, and I was here when Terry came in here and performed, okay? But, I represent those two, there's two factories, I'll call them, out there, is that correct, in the Second Ward?
There's an asphalt plant, and I believe there's a concrete crushing facility.
So I represent that area and that part of it. True enough, they're not located in Rock Island, they're locate, the headquarters are located in Mylan, but when we start saying things like this, I asked the attorney, when we start saying you've got to be headquartered or whatever in Rock Island, I believe we're working on some different things, okay? Problematic. I contacted the attorney general's office also, which Josh did, correct? They will come back with a ruling, probably three weeks to a month, they cannot tell you anything now, and I believe we go with what they say, if this is right, if this is legal, fine and dandy. If it isn't, then we have to go that away. Thank you.
Alderman Foley, you have something?
No.
Okay, let's see, turn your thing on. No other comments? Okay, we do have one person to sign up to speak, Nancy Trice, would you come to the podium, Nancy? Could you pull the microphone down a little bit, so they can hear you?
Okay, thank you. Can you hear me?
We need name in, we need name in the city you reside in.
Uh, Nancy Trice, 520 30th Street, Rock Island. First of all, thank you, um, everyone, mayor and aldermen, for letting me speak. This is just, um, I, I just want, not only my voice heard, but, I don't know if you ever revisit issues or anything, um, on, this is what my issue is, is your $35, um, flyer that you put on your door, this serves no purpose, um, other than putting money, I think, in your pocket. When you get your late notice, because I, I, I mean, I struggle, and I pay my bills a lot by a pink notice, by a late notice, so you get your notice, and you go down to the city, you go down to your water department, and you make arrangements to pay your bills, this is how I pay a lot of my bills, because I can't pay them in full, so you make arrangements, and they're okay with it. You look at the calendar, and you say, "I get paid this Friday, this Friday, this Friday, I can pay this, this, and this." Everybody's okay, they're okay. However, the next day, now even if you've made your arrangements, and you're going to have this paid, they come and put this on your door in the meantime. Serves no purpose, we've already discussed this, I'm going to pay it, I'm going to pay it in full, and it'll be, my water's never been cut off, I always manage, but this serves no purpose whatsoever. This did, because it got, it says, "Hey, it's time to pay, you're going to be cut off," but this $35 served absolutely no purpose. That's my comment, I just wish you would revisit this, I know it's money in Rock Island's pocket, but there's just, it just doesn't need to be. Or maybe look at it a different way, it used to be you could go and make arrangements, and then it would be okay, but, um, now, eh, there's no arrangements, it doesn't matter, this is on there, if you don't pay, my, this happened just last time, I got paid on a Friday, this was hung Thursday, I had made my arrangements, there was no reason, one day, eh, other than $35 that I didn't have. That's my issue, is, is this, um, and I don't know.
Who answers this question? Would that be Larry, or would that be?
Stephanie.
Stephanie? My question, okay, so my question is, isn't this blue tag only put on after the water's shut off, and that's to get the water turned back on?
No.
It's before?
It's right before.
It's a one-week notice prior to shut off, so, we always do a, a door hanger one week prior to shut off, but Stephanie can, can speak to the payment arrangement.
Well, not always, this is new.
No, we've done this for decades.
No.
Yeah, it didn't use to be, so it didn't use to be $35, and the council, it used to be 70 for a, a shut off, and the council changed that a couple years ago, uh, to 35 for the door hanger, and 35 for the shut off, but we've done the door hanger forever.
Well, I've lived here for eight years, at, at this resident, and this is, just this last year or two is when...
You never, you never reached the point to get to the door hanger then?
Well, I've never been shut off, but I, I mean, I pay my bill by this pink notice, so I get this all the time.
Yeah, but if you get, if you get the notice, the blue card, a week in advance, do you have to pay the $35 because you got the blue card?
Not until the door hanger goes up, but again, Stephanie can speak to the, the sequence of events.
Well, I think that you guys are saying two different things. We have always...
I know the sequence, yeah.
Yeah, that, we always put that blue tag on it, that's always been...
Right, but it didn't always have a fee associated with it.
It just wasn't always a fee associated with...
But the, the water, to get your water turned back on, used to be double what it is now.
Correct.
Right.
And, and I'm not sure of the history, but part of the, the splitting of the 70, $70 into two $35 payments, did that coincide with when we changed to allow the, the payment, the three payments, instead of paying it all at once, and then you, you have...
Was an initiative by a former councilman.
Yeah.
Uh, he suggested it, and the council voted on it, it was not a staff recommendation.
We're going to have to look at this, because I thought, I thought that you paid the $35 if your water was shut off. I don't know why we would charge a $35 fee, just because we put it on a week in advance.
I tried to fight against that, but I, we, we lost, so our agreement was that to turn it back on, it would be $35, and not the $70.
Yeah, but they didn't turn it off.
No, no, when you get that notice, and they, and the argument was that, uh, it costs the city money to go and put that notice on all these things here.
Well, you wouldn't need to put the notice on, because I was just down there the next, the prior day, making arrangements.
I think that's a different issue right there, I think if you made arrangements, I don't see why...
What purpose, that's what I'm saying, I don't know the purpose.
Why don't we let Stephanie talk, and then see, and then we can talk through that, because I know I have questions too, but maybe she'll answer them.
For my, oh, I don't know if you remember, yeah, Kim, it's my, my alderman. So I called her, and I appreciate this, if you could just revisit this, um, I don't know how technical you can get, if you make arrangements, don't make arrangements type thing, but, but this happened the last two, I mean, I wish I could pay my bill on time, but, um, I, I get it paid, I get it paid, but I, I don't need, I don't need an extra $35 one day.
I understand charging if we have to turn it back on, and I understand putting that out there, giving you a week's notice, but I don't know why we charge the 35, yeah, but I don't know why we charge the 35 if, if we have never turned your water off.
Let's have, let's have Stephanie come back, take a look at the policy that you inherited, and see if there's a way that, you know, if there's, if you have a different insight or idea, the best way for us to most effectively work, you know, protect the interests of our residents, but also protect our interest in this too.
Okay.
Stephanie, would you, Stephanie?
All right.
Would you get her contact information and contact her, please?
Thank you for listening.
Yes, thank you for coming.
Well, thank you for coming here, because I know, there's probably a lot of other folks who have experienced the hardship, and, uh, you know, the city of Rock Island's not, uh, um, you know, Visa or MasterCard, we're not here to, to hose consumers and figure out how to get, uh, I, I imagine the revenue that we get from that is, is so miniscule, uh, but it, it does represent a substantial hardship, and I think you'll find that we'll have, uh, universal agreement on that, and...
Well, I can understand it costs $35 to turn it back on, but not just to put the card up there.
Exactly.
It used to be 70 to get it turned back on, so there was a back and forth discussion on how to make that more affordable, because that was really hurting people, so then we ended up going with the compromise of doing it this way, and, I mean, that's what tends to be unfortunate with this, or isn't a good way, when you have people that, you know, maybe are behind on their water bill, and you have fees associated with it, and staff wants to collect for those costs, and trying to find a balance of what's fair for our residency, and for paying for it.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you for coming down, yep.
Yeah, that's all we had signed up for tonight, so we need a motion to recess